Well, they told me down there in the environmental office and they flustered me. I said it was a week. But anyway, I own both these tracts, okay? So I just took 18 foot off one track and I sold this one. And I want to go get it recorded, but I can't do it till she signs it. And they said that she has to do it here.
Well, because she's not here. I mean, she's just not here yet. She should be. But I don't know if...
Has the plat been reviewed?
That's one of... No, that's one of them.
It don't need to be reviewed. Like I said, he's spoken. I don't know about taking part in all. Just gotta get it.
So if you're moving a lot line, it needs to have to... You have to comply with the local government subsidy.
Okay, that's not what they told me. Well, I've had a bunch of people tell me that. I mean, a lot of people.
Okay, by Tennessee state law, if you're creating a lot line, if you're moving a lot line, or if you're deleting a lot line, that's why it has to comply with the local government subsidy. It has to go through the process for you.
At this time, I'll call this meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Zonings to order. And Bob, if you would, I'll give you a word of prayer and release and pledge in that.
Our heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this meeting tonight. Direct us to put the needs and interests of our fellow Jeffersonian county before our own interest. Lead us to do thy will in all our actions this evening. We ask this in the name of our good Redeemer, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I trust that you received your packet and had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the July meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to those? Being done, I'll entertain the motion to approve. Have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of approving the July minutes for the Board of Zonings, let me know when I'm saying aye. All those opposed, passes. And citizens input tonight. Okay, that's a planning commission. Both of these are going to follow in the planning commission, so we can move on down to the agenda with that. Barriers request of seven feet from the side of garage addition on an existing house at 513 Center Lane, Canter Lane, Danred by the Bosch Family Living Trust, John and Linda Bosch. Do we have...
How you doing?
Good way. Are you, sir?
There's a... There's a... An error here. We're asking for a five foot instead of a seven foot.
It's five foot. That's in. Stephanie, that's... I mean, that's common practice for some of the other stuff over around in there. It's nothing out of the ordinary. You all should have a copy of that in the packet. Do you have any questions over there? Me, I want to pledge the board. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second to grant the barriers, so everybody knows what we're voting on here. And again, it says, uh... It says seven feet, but he is just asking for a five foot barrier for the garage.
I'll second.
Okay, well, we got... Bobby second, so... Any other questions or anything about it? All those in favor of granting the five foot barriers, let me know when I'm saying aye. All those opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much. We have no other items on the agenda, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned me, let me know when I'm saying aye. All those opposed, passing. Adjourned for the other thing. This time, I'll call the... Call order the regional planning commission. And again, I trust you received your packets, had a chance to look at your minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? Being done, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July planning commission meeting, let me know when I'm saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Uh, we have two citizens input tonight.
We have a place for the RPC.
Okay, that's what we just called over.
Yes.
Bob?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a... Josh Clark here.
Good evening. I'm Josh Clark with Lake Haven Cabin Resort on Muddy Creek in Douglas Lake. I want to thank the planning commission for your ongoing support and a proud working relationship that we've had the past five years in creating Lake Haven. We have a total of 61 completed cabins to date, contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars in property tax and hotel motel tax revenues. Together, we've taken 60 acres underwater and 120 acres of wooded hills and ravines and turned it into what is becoming the premier lakefront resort in the Smoky Mountains. I'm here tonight to be released from a performance bond on phase 3A. We have completed all requirements of the bond, and I'm happy to entertain any questions the commission may have for me during my portion of tonight's agenda. But in this public portion of this meeting, and before I'm seated, I would like to ask each of you to vote no on the STR ordinance being put up for a vote at the commissioners' meeting this coming Monday. I'm asking this now since I will be unable to attend the commissioners' meeting on Monday due to a prior business commitment out of town that's been on my calendar since February and I just can't reschedule. I've met with the mayor and been present for many of the special committee meetings from which this legislation was derived. I understand that the mayor originally presented the special committee with a four-page document from a respected statewide legal consulting company designed to help the county ensure it was capturing all the potential revenue it could generate from STRs. Anyone who has observed me at these meetings will attest to the fact that I'm not opposed to short-term rental regulation. In fact, last fall, I volunteered to submit all the short-term rental applications and permitting fees to the county in one packet with one check from the HOA. And as a developer and builder who has completed over 130 cabins in the last three years in nine distinct phases of development, I comply every day with local, state, and federal regulations and inspections. It's my business. I am, however, very opposed to a piece of legislation that the county's voting on next week. That original four-page document has ballooned into a 17-page book that is confusing, onerous, and illegal. I'm asking you to vote no for the following reasons. One, the Jefferson County short-term rental ordinance is illegal based upon its mishandling and really ignoring of the grandfather clause in the Tennessee Short-Term Rental Act that was passed in 2018. Jefferson County STR ordinance is illegal based upon the unreasonable nature of the demands it places on short-term rental owners, the disproportionate regulations it places on short-term rental residential properties versus non-short-term rental residential properties in the county, and its classification as short-term rentals as commercial. The Jefferson County short-term rental ordinance will be detrimental to the Jefferson County tourism tax revenues as it will add one of the most restrictive, ambiguous, and anti-short-term rental permitting and compliance ordinances in the state to what is an emerging market. We are currently the 30th market in the state. As someone... Well, this document has been hijacked by a few anti-growth and anti-short-term rental citizens. I don't have a problem with them, and I don't believe they have a problem with me. They've said clearly and publicly that they don't have a problem with Lake Haven, but they have a problem with short-term rentals in their neighborhood. But rather than build influence with their neighbors and solve this privately through their HOA CCNRs, they're dragging the county into property rights fights that should not be. As somebody who's invested thousands of hours, tens of millions of dollars, and owns a dozen residences in this county, I'm asking to vote no on STR ordinance on Monday. It needs to die. And from its ashes, a document much like the one the mayor originally gave the committee needs to rise. So along with voting no, I'm asking that you nominate a subcommittee comprised of the tourism director, the county clerk, the mayor, and two short-term rental property owners to work with county legal counsel to create a simple pro-safety ordinance that will be enforceable, generate revenue, and encourage professional investors to bring this county increased property taxes and hotel motel taxes. I'm almost done. Thank you for your patience. In closing, I feel like I must let the commission know that should the current ordinance pass, as the president of the Lake Haven Cabin Owners Association, I will have no option but to pursue legal action against the county for this clear violation of the state law on behalf of the 61 property owners who invested in Lake Haven previous to the STR ordinances being enacted. As the developer of Lake Haven, I will have no option but to shut down future development, including the 22 lakefront lots of Phase 3 for which I'm currently completing rough grading with plans to begin construction on cabins next summer. If the STR ordinance passes, I will be back next month before this commission, asking to be released from my Phase 3 bond, not because I have completed development, but rather because the county has enacted legislation that hasn't had an adverse material effect on what it had previously approved for me. So for these reasons, I really ask you to vote no next Mon... Monday. I think I've got a reputation with you guys of following the rules, and I want to continue to do that, so that I, my investors, and fellow owners at Lake Haven can continue to work with you to grow our county in a way that is safe, enjoyable for its citizens, and those guests who should come here to enjoy the beauty with which God has blessed us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Kenneth Unger.
Excuse me. Is that a question? You said you moved on from the agenda. Do you have Stephanie Mann on the agenda?
Not on Board of Zonings field, is it not?
No. Uh, well, we're subdividing a piece of property. So is that something that's coming up or something that would have been in the zoning mission?
Stephanie Mann?
She's on there.
Plan commission.
Okay, so we just have forgotten to hear.
Yeah, yeah. We just... We just started this meeting, and this is the first part of it.
Okay. I've never been to one. Don't know how those.
You're fine, huh? Okay, if you was... Name an address.
My name is Kenneth Unger. I have a 460 Highway 25E. This is in concerns to the Dollar General. Those Dollar General going up right next door to us. I've got some missions as far as main issues is that road is... Are they going to be widened that road before they do construction on it? That is a very big gated intersection. I mean, the drive on 25E, they... We're planning on putting the driveway in it. It's asking for trouble. It's unsafe. I know T-Dax has been out there talking about widening the road, but I... I'm opposed to getting, you know, fully against this until it's taken care of. And we got the property right next to it, and it's... We got dogs, four dogs out there and that store is just going to just wreak havoc on our lives. The retention pond's going to be right there in our front yard. You know, I want to see a privacy fence put up, and they need to accommodate something instead of just putting up a store and not caring about anything else. I'm totally against this Dollar General store. But the widen of the road or something, the speed limits need to be changed down there. It's right at the dip in the road. I mean, there's a blind spot when you come over the hill right there, and I mean, there's accidents almost every day. But that store, and I guarantee it's going to be every single day. There's going to be lives lost. It's dangerous. Something needs to be done. I know. That's all I got to say. I don't... It's about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Unger. And next, we have Gail for Zanigan.
Thank you for giving me this time. I just have a short statement that I need to make. You know, A1 property currently has several uses that are not permitted on agricultural land. For instance, church camps are not allowed to operate on A1 property. The zoning office presently acts as the enforcer for this rule. I would submit that they need to cite Grace Industries or Grace Contractors as violating the use of A1 land. That's all I have to say. We have an enforcer. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanigan. And that completes the citizens' input portion. Next up on the agenda is item number eight, release of bond number 258666 for the paving and underground utilities in the sum of $1,096,528 for Lake Haven subdivision Phase 3 at Land Art American Corporation. Josh Clark.
Thank you. So we have completed the installation of the underground utilities and the paving. I believe in your packet, you should have a copy of a letter from County Highway Superintendent Joe Patterson signing off on our road, a copy of the will serve letter from our private sewer utility for Adenus, which Tennessee wastewater, which encompasses actually all 165 of our lots. I provide a copy of the original permit and approval for our private water utility and the permit number there. We have... We're providing water to over 61 units now and are permitted to go to 163 units. Phase 3A is just six lots, 138 through 143. There's a copy of the reported plat there for you as well. And then I included there a copy of the original performance bond in the amount of $1,096,528. So this will be the third time that we've done this, and so typically, I come, I provide this, and then you instruct staff to write a letter to my bonding company to release the performance bond since it's been satisfied. And that's what I'm asking for.
Stephanie, everything that we need has been submitted. There's nothing...
Yes.
Nothing lacking in this at all. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clark?
First, two lots show. You said the way over 163, and you go 165.
So when we... So we are not even... We're not even... Phase 1, 2, 3, and 3A only amounts to about 130 lots. So we don't have... We don't even have 163 or 165 platted lots. When we build our utilities, I built the maximum sewer that I could based upon the available sewer or available land for our drip systems. And so that was 72,000 gallons per day. At that time, we only had 102 platted lots. And so when we went to the state for our sewer permit, you get two things in your permit. You get gallons per day, and you get number of lots. And so our original sewer permit was only for those 102 lots because at that time, that's all that we had platted. And that 72,000 gallons, at that time, our engineers were telling us it would be able to serve 163 lots. So when I went then, we did sewer first, and then we did water. So then when we went to engineer our water, our engineers engineered the water system to max out at our sewer system's capacity, that 72,000 gallons per day. And so, which at the time was 163 lots. And so we designed it, engineered it. It was engineered for 163 lots, and we were permitted for 163 lots. But then, after we went and got our final plat for Phase 3A and for Phase 3, we went back to the state, and at that point, we had over a year and a half worth of metrics, measurements on our actual consumption wastewater. And when they re-engineered our wastewater, the state said, no, our wastewater will serve 165 lots based upon our current consumption. So we went ahead and got the permit for increase from 102 to 165. But you're correct. Our water can only serve 162, and our sewer can serve 165. I hope that made sense. I'm a storyteller.
No, I'm right.
There's about two and a half years' worth of time in that journey.
Do we have any other questions? Are you planning to go on to 165 lots on complete?
It's my hope.
Okay, so how are you going to make up the service of those?
Oh, okay. So you were specifically asking 165 versus 163. So we will have to expand our sewer. So our preliminary approval was up to 250 cabins. And the zoning would allow for a lot more than that, but our preliminary plan approval was 250. So no matter what, I'm going to have to add on to my sewer plant or build a second sewer plant towards the back of the resort. So our water treatment, we can just simply add. It's not a matter of treatment capacity. It's a matter of supply. And so the way that we'll expand that is just by digging new wells. TBA has actually... We're one of the... Oh, I believe we're the only private water utility that TBA has licensed. We were permitted this year to pull water, surface water from the lake for treatment and distribution. However, we have not worked through with the state the engineering for that. So while TBA would let us withdraw it, we can't distribute it because we haven't yet figured out... They haven't figured out the engineering for a small utility like us versus a large municipality.
Do we have any other questions? Yeah?
Yes.
Do you have anything here?
Well, I'm assuming that this bond obviously covers your sewer and water. Are you asking the county... You're asking for the license bond. Are you asking for the county to accept maintenance of your roadway?
No. This is a private...
Okay, this is private, right?
Yes, ma'am. They're done to county specs, but they're all tied.
What's place the board?
Make a motion to release the bond.
I'll second that. Motion second. Any other discussion on releasing the bond? We'll take a vote. All those in favor of releasing the bond, let me know when I'm saying aye. All those opposed, passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Next item on the agenda, item B, preliminary plat approval for Mountain View Estates, 68 lots off of Coral Road, Jefferson City, by James Phelan.
He actually... That was the one we needed, the documents last night. Catherine approved those last night, so he technically is approved with what he turned in since last meeting.
Everything in, everything done, so we don't even have to entertain this.
Yeah. I just took a look at the roads and drains plans to make sure that they were... Your road supervisor had heard that, and it was...
That was item B. That was the one we approved contingent upon him getting all the signatures and stuff into us, and he has the... He has completed all that by. And Stephanie and Catherine both wouldn't stand. So we'll slide on down to item C, final plat... Pardon me. C, final plat for five lots off Highway 139 of Utopia Lane. Mr. Danred, three subdivision of Fairview Heights, lots 22, 23, 24, 35, 36, 37, and 38. Danred by Tina and Chadwick Ross, Steve and Desmond. Or Steve Desmond?
Yes, sir. I'm Steve Desmond. On behalf of the Rosses. They had eight lots, and they would like to... They're down to five.
Everybody should have a copy of that. Everybody should have a copy of that.
This is three sisters.
Oh, not this one.
No, it's a, it's a five lot, it's an eight lot, my lord, five.
Yeah, that's the one y'all.
I know I looked at, but it was, sorry. Okay. Well, actually, improve them.
That's the one that was taking eight lots. And the subdivision developed in the 60s.
Stephanie, if you don't mind, share with us what you just did back there again, so everybody can hear.
This is an old subdivision that was developed in the 60s. So they're actually taking eight lots in R1 and making them into five lots. There's one existing house that's been there since I think the early mid 60s. And they're making that lot larger and then making the four addition, or four lots of the remaining.
And did he present anything with the signature blocks?
Do you have the original? Yeah, that's the one I had listed out, the one after the smaller one. He's got the larger copy, but it's not, it's not. He's got the copy here, but the only one that's on over the other.
Yeah, outside. Outside.
Surveyor waiting.
Is it appropriate to change one of these? Which one is this?
Oh, that's the one.
You're going to approve it with conditions. Yeah, approve it with conditions, but don't, don't.
There are several things that's got to be brought into compliance with those blocks and the signatures and stuff.
The signatures, I'm waiting, I just, nobody wanted to sign it unless it was approved. You know, the surveyor didn't want to sign it. And I tried to take it down to T-Dot and it's not been approved by you all yet, so nobody wants to sign it. He didn't want to sign us, the documents that wasn't approved.
Tom, you said you signed, Chris.
Yeah, I worry, if it's a copy he has here, has our owner's signature and my signature, okay.
I'm just waiting for approval to get, then I can go down and get everybody else's signature and I'll bring it back down.
So did he change the signature blocks for Jefferson County for Knox County?
Yeah, I did. What do you mean? All I put my own stamp on. Because he had Knox County.
But nobody's checked it for compliance with staff comments.
And this is the first time you filed after?
He had it in the office a couple of weeks ago, but we didn't have, I don't know if he signed it or not.
I think he did sign it.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, too.
That's the next one we're going to make. That's I'm doing the same thing, I hear them looking at. And it was a whole eight lot subdivision, they were putting back the plaque.
Okay, there we go.
It would be possible to approve contingent upon staff comments and getting all those signature blocks before Jefferson County. And getting that stuff and getting it into the office.
I could get the signatures, as long as I know it's going to be approved. I can go down and get T-Dot and the surveyor, be back in a week or so. And Steph is office with all the signatures in there.
But the signature blocks are incorrect. So you'd have to tell your surveyor to correct them.
Okay.
They got Knox County on.
It had to be Jeff from County Signature Box. And he can fix that.
But there's a number of them, and if he changes that, you have to re-sign.
Re-sign. Okay, so I'll need to get him to do it and then have you come back down and re-sign.
I just put my own stamp, Jefferson.
Understand. But you need to make sure he has a list of the staff comments.
Does everybody think, understand what we're looking at here? What's place of the board?
Make a motion to approve after approval, after you do the signature blocks correctly for Jefferson County. And I'm not sure what all blocks we need on there, that would be something Stephanie could probably.
There's a list.
I'll make a motion to approve it under the condition that that is changed to Jefferson County.
I say, may I prop motion, say, do we have any further discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor of approving contingent upon signature block and staff comments, let me know what's saying, aye? All opposed? Now, trigger. We're on the right one.
It actually looks very nice.
It does, it does.
When I said, hey, do you know they redid the road? So, yeah, you have to check it out. Two different members of that family, and one of them is actually interested in the third lot. They just wanted to wait until all this was resolved first. So it may end up going to the, all of it to the same family.
No, but the signature block for water, you see, it's not there. Don't you think that would have that, have that? And of course, information for electrical service to serve those in the cooperative utility. And signature block for that. And then the share, the two of us want to share a driveway, is that correct? And just a question on that, how is maintenance of that driveway going to be made in ownership of it?
Since it's the same family, they're just sharing responsibility for it. It's currently gravel and there's gravel to go over it again. So I don't know if they have plans to pave it or not, but since it's the same family, they're just going to share responsibility.
Of course, 911, certify where, name and property addresses, we need that. And we can look at this kind of, like we did the last one, once these are filled, we can approve contingent upon those things being done. Do you have any further concerns?
No. No, there's some similar things, right through county disbursements, we just have to. And that didn't, there were a number of things. But if you approve it contingent, then Stephanie can check this, will comply.
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
So the county then have to maintain the rest?
Share a driveway, going into those and it'll leave for that family. On his way, that's the way I understand it. Any no questions, what's place of the board?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, contingent upon those signature blocks, getting filled out with some water and 911 and the electric service on those. And Stephanie can walk you through.
Okay, I was going to say, because I don't know what you're talking about.
If you deal with her, she can show you exactly what needs to be added and that. Get those signatures and get that back into her. Again, if I'm going to go. If it passes, we have a second, is there any further discussion? All of that, we're approving three sisters. Let it be known by saying, aye? All opposed, most passing. Again, that's Stephanie, give you that process, Stephanie will get it. She can walk you through it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you guys. Item E, final plat approval for, pardon me, we just did E. No, we're, sorry. Final plat approval for three lots on Hinchy Hollow Road, New Market by Dan and Lily Hawker.
Right, I don't have any trouble reading this, it's not very clear.
They may actually have the large. Do you have a large one on that, Stephanie?
I've got it.
She's got it, sir. Okay, we'll get one after that box.
These are copies that was given to my husband and my son. I guess what the main concern is, I guess it's just the roadway, the driveway. And this is just going to be family, anyway, it's owned property. And we're signing that part to my son and daughter-in-law. So they can place a home. And the roads are, like the driveway or whatever you want to call it, the roadway, it's going to be maintained actually.
These are mobile homes?
I see the gravel driveway and then I see the lines between it, and this may be a stupid question. I apologize ahead of time. But it's the dotted lines in the middle there, is that a roadway? In case something happens later on yourself, or is the driveway going to be the roadway? Just out of curiosity.
I guess it's the driveway is going to be the roadway, but we own all of it. It's just that I'm giving that one part that's in the back to my son and daughter-in-law. Yes, ma'am, I'm going to define this one that are getting.
Oh, this one?
Yes, it's the one in the back.
And it's the larger lot.
It is about one of, it's about, I probably say about two, two acres, yeah, two hundred fourteen.
The one with the layout starts out at 100 feet width and then narrows to 87 and a half on the back end, is that correct?
Eighty-seven point five.
On the back side. It starts out at 100?
Yes, in the front. I'm not sure how Mr. Kent done this, but he said he sent a levy of all these to you.
That's what I heard.
That's a little interesting.
And this is a lot. And it makes it an other lot, because it's a new lot, it's just. Like, I don't know, Tom, do you have any comments about the real lots off these three lots?
I have a, my decision, I do sit. I've got this right here on it as far as the.
The reason I didn't sign it out before it came to this commission is because of the roadway, the way it was put on there. On two lots, of course, there's two structures on there, but if you take the roadway, neither one of those houses can form the building setback. But now, you know, that was a question Stephanie and I have on whether or not, you know, that roadway splitting the two property lines which encroaches on each lot, which makes, if you went back to build, would they be grandfathered as far as not leaving the building setback line? Because, you know, all these lots, you got to have at least 100 foot for, you know, building setback. So that was our question why, you know, there's actually two lot that we didn't sign because of that, you know.
But it, but it's actually three lots.
Oh, yeah, three, yeah, three, I'm sorry, yeah.
The notation says two, so there are.
But I didn't sign it because I had a question about, you know, I talked to Stephanie about it and she didn't really know about the roadway. So we let it stay flat like it is.
One can be the, to the grist, it's the, and. Where would the buildings? It's going to be on the back side. Once it gets long, you go through the little, little angle there, the access part, it'd be in there. There's already existing mobile home up there.
Do you allow more than one building, or do you allow record?
No, the one R3 would be where they're wanting to fit the house, another structure.
One R3.
Yeah, one R3.
So one R2 is already built on.
One R2 already has a house.
Yeah, it's up in the front.
There are two houses over two front tracks and that one stands at the back. And the other one is the one that's going to be the new lot. That make sense?
One R3, the 2.14 acres. It's over 100 foot on the front and back. We've got proper width on it.
I'll have my glasses put at 100, so, yeah.
And each one of these lots can sustain a primary, say, brick, your mom? I do think that your surveyor needs to go back and make this a formal lot. As it is, it appears to only be doing, like, they're subdividing these two and this one isn't included. But technically, this is a new lot as well.
How is that, that one a new lot when it's part of the front lot?
Because you're subdividing off the back portion of it. So you're creating technically a new lot. It's labeled as such 1R1, but your surveyor has drawn it outside the boundaries of the dark lines. So it appears not to be a lot that you're recording. Well, lot 1R1 is now, has, now has a new property boundary. So technically, by subdividing, you created a new lot. So you have three lots that you're creating.
Yes, okay, this, if you're looking at it from this angle here, these two right here, this one over here is already been divided, subdivided. It's already been recorded.
The small one up front has been, that's a separate lot by itself.
This one right here is by itself.
Okay, so all we're doing is dividing the lot that is now made up of 1R2 and 1R3.
And she dividing this to get this roadway going to that.
These lot lines are all as existing.
Yeah, okay. I think here before our confusion was, it was a two lot and now we're taking one of the two lot and cutting it in too.
Yes.
Like I say, that was the concern we had was the roadway. The roadway, you know, I've never seen one go up the middle of two piece property.
But it's, it's, it's family, it's nothing else. I mean, nobody else is going to be there except for family. And I'm just trying to help my son and daughter.
I think the issue you're saying is if that piece of property was ever sold, or that lot was sold, it would be more beneficial to have it, I know it's clear. And I think that's what you're thinking, and that's what I'm thinking, looking at it. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, it's a standard rule of thumb, don't consider ownership because that changes.
Isn't there a thing called, such of a thing as a, a. Isn't there a thing called such of a thing as a, a right-of-way on?
Well, it should be labeled as an access easement.
Well, that's, that's what I was.
And the width should be delineated. Um, otherwise, track one R three doesn't have frontage, and technically, without dedicating an access, it has no legal right of access across the other lots.
So if we get the survey to show that it's an access easement, you can take a piece with that?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think that's not in there. Uh, you can present lot, uh, note bullet one.
Okay.
Uh, because that's an existing lot, um.
And two, is that correct?
Yes. And so the fourth bullet says, if some of the drive should be identified within an access easement.
Maintain, who's gonna be the boss of jobs and who's gonna be the family, just anything that. Signature block, the water provider. And now more blocks, so we could.
You can approve it with that comment?
See, that comment.
With the exit, set for the first two?
Yeah. Are you pleased with getting that required stuff to her and getting that right-of-way that you're talking about listed as an access easement?
Okay, so, I'm not familiar with all of this stuff.
What you need to do is take the corrections to your surveyor.
Yes.
Or Stephanie can email them or provide them. And he makes corrections and brings it back to you. At that point, she needs to check it, and then you can get, uh, she'll authorize you to start getting the signature of the lot signed.
Okay.
Which would also include the, uh, county health official.
Okay, so.
She, she.
All I need to do is just get Mr. Kent to make sure this is a.
She, she'll talk to you about what he needs to do and what he needs to have it on there. We'll give you that list, and then you'll run that down, get that done, get back with her, and she'll check out everything that's been done, as seems to be.
Okay, well, I need to come back and through the process of this.
No, no, well, if it's passed, if it's, if it's approved and passed, now, we've still gotta vote on it. We're just kinda sharing with you what, what we get you done.
Okay, I really do.
So everybody understand it's kind of a driving load of lines.
Yeah, your surveyor will know what to do.
Yes, yes.
So what's questions for?
Make the motion to approve with those stipulations.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I think.
Stephanie, any further discussion? Being none, all of those in favor of approving the contingent upon the, uh, the blocks and the, uh, access easement, let be known by saying aye. All of opposed? Thank you. Just keep with her, and she'll walk you through all of it, ma'am. Adam F. Site plan review for a new Dollar General could be located on Highway twenty-five E, White Pioneer, near Nana Road by J.B.L. Investment Company. Anyone here to say that?
My name's Tim Dunaway, I'm with J.B.L. Investment Company. Yes, we are suggesting another Dollar General store. Uh, it's a ninety-one hundred square footer, they're starting to get a little smaller now, it's a little smaller than their usual stores, so it creates a little less parking requirements and so on. We got the drawings there in front of you, I think you got the packet, which shows the graded plans, what we're proposing. Kinda, we're, I don't know if we're gonna respond to the comments from the public, stat or not, I'd be glad to go write down what I can, can say at this point, and respond to all of that, but whatever y'all.
Be more happy to go ahead and hear that, of course, part of that has to be looked at on BZA.
That's gonna say there's a lot more to do, we still gotta get BZA approval for the parking quantities and a couple of the sizes and spaces that are shown, and we're gonna be applying, we're applying the terms for that meeting next month. Of course, we have to get through the building review, also for building permit. And T-Doc, uh, they have just barely started conversations with our civil engineer about a driveway permit, so all the track combinations and driveway locations. There is a, I think, a plan for that intersection, it's probably in their three-year plan, I don't know all the details that T-Doc's got, plans to approve that, that intersection at some times. So we obviously have to get past them, get them agreeable to whatever we're proposing will work within their plan.
Right.
And that's still a hurdle we've got to go over. Um, we do have applied for subdivision plat, and we've also applied for separate permit, which I think the separate part is, is approved. We've had our souls tested and the permit's ready to pick up. Haven't got it yet, but it's stated. So at this point, we're just asking for the site plan itself to be approved, conditional on all those other approvals from T-Doc, the building department. I guess the separate were passed, but we still have to get something from BZA as well, like. The drainage, if you wanna look, I know that's, Dollar Store's a lot to be right next door to you, and we will definitely work with any neighbors. Dollar General's also always adamant about not wanting to make anyone mad where they're going, because the people they're going, the customers. So they do all they can, when they can. Whereas close to the side lot line on the north, they will make us, they will require us to go ahead and put in a, some sort of a wood fence screen or landscaping screen, to screen off the, the house, the end of that new building from the property to the north there. So visually, it'll be separated, and our loading is, is, thank goodness, farther to the south, it's away, as far, far away from that adjacent house as possible. That's the worst of it, usually when the loading areas are just adjacent to a house, it can be a distraction, but they'll be on the quiet end, that's, if, if we ever get our approvals. The drainage itself, it does go to the southeast, the people we're purchasing the property from own the surrounding property. And so he's given us permission, obviously, we've got it all contained, and it's going to be discharged to a level spreader on that set of drawings. It'll go to the same point of discharge that it's been going to now, so it's, and it's going directly away from the, the house adjacent to the north. Part of the drainage, so there, anything I have to do with stormwater, we going to the staff.
So they want to discuss about the traffic on the driveway and the intersection there?
We'll do what, what T-Doc directs us to do, they're the ones that are in charge of y'all's traffic control, and if there's, if they see an issue with placing of this store on this highway, with the plans that they've got for this highway, they'll say, no. Yeah, or they'll make us go spend the money to do the improvements right now, which that also makes it go away.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big intersection, I think they're planning on left turn lanes and everything else. We'll certainly do what we can, if it, if it's feasible for us to do some of the improvements now that T-Doc requires. We've done that fast as well, just to get, get things set so that it's paved for the future, and whenever that intersection gets improved, it slides right into their plan. But they're the gatekeepers of that, they tell us if yes or no. They say no, we go about our business.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you're gonna subdivide this property, this is, these are not lease loans, they're proposed.
No, that's a subdivision one.
So when do you plan on doing that?
The plaque's one of these, it's one of these.
Oh, that you just got?
No, that's here, that I've had. One of these, uh, pile here. I already had it.
You are, had it for?
Yeah.
And the, um, oh, in the back, is this an retention pond where you're on your stormwater going to? It looks like the grain is creating a small detention.
It's a level area, I think the final plan, my civil engineer's here, maybe he can speak better to it than I can, but I believe it's designed to be a level spread discharge point. It's not gonna, it's not required by, uh, T-Deck to create a retention holding pond and then discharge it.
Well, those are typical.
Okay, again, he's the one who has done the research and created this drawing, how it led him to answer that.
It looks like the, he just probably took a breath, right? Looks like there's a small detention that he's done it into, just to slow it down.
What is, just a level spreader, so we just wanna spread that water back out in twenty feet wide before we use it on the people that are buying the property from, so it's not an erosion problem. We're, we're within, probably, less than a thousand feet of the lake.
So you're in the lower third of the watershed anyway, so you should be able, they want you to let it, what is it? Yeah.
I'm Will Robinson, twelve forty-eight North Shore, we're laying here in the city. Sorry.
Do we have any other questions for? And anything that's done with this will be strictly contingent upon what is looked at by BZA next month. And this is already on the agenda too.
Uh, Will, I had a question about the width of access drives, you got three lanes. Um, we split the minimum to thirty-six, they may be, I just asked for you to specify that, too.
Okay, it is thirty-six foot wide, three, three lanes.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, two, two exits and one.
And then, because it's an arterial road, it's a state route, it's supposed to be forty foot from the edge of your property line. Uh, I was not aware that that was a property line, so do you know if that meets that forty-foot requirement?
If we aren't, we're close, and we can move if we have to.
Okay.
But that's, you know.
If not, then that might be something that you want to, uh.
Yeah, this twenty feet that go there, it looks, we look, that's, it's right on. I believe it's forty-one feet, because we, we have to be twenty feet, I started out with less property, and we were twenty-one feet off the property line, because T-Doc requires twenty. I gave a little more, and then we added twenty feet, so we should be forty.
So you should be forty, okay.
And if you need to see it, I think the dimension of the width of that driveway is on the C one point one, it's got.
Yeah, we need to be.
Uh, they're small, I have to.
I just asked him.
I have to look over them when I see it.
Uh, and then your aisle width? Is twenty?
Should be on that same thing.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, you got ninety degrees parking?
Thirty-five and thirty-two around the.
So that may be one, some of you have to avail it at some point.
Uh, which?
Uh, the aisle width, the two-way traffic, I'm ninety-degree parking.
We're, we're exceeding it.
Is there a maximum?
Thirty-five and thirty-two.
On your aisle width?
Yes. It's, it's thirty-five on the spaces in front of it, and on thirty-two on the legs.
Anyway, if you'll just address that.
And for what it's worth, those are, they're very wide, so we give truck access. Dollar General has to create a site that they can pull into and back up to their loading, instead of having to try to back off the highway or whatever. I have a shelf to turn around on the site that shows that it works, from turning those big trucks around on the site. And that's why those are so wide, yeah.
Can you raise your hand?
Yeah, we're, I'm the property owner to the south of them. We have one point, probably one point one, one point one commercial there. And then our residential mobile home is right there also.
Like, that's basically the retention ground, right there in our front yard.
Exactly.
Southeast side of this going up the north side.
Okay, we, we typically don't allow comments other than during the citizens' session.
Yes, Mr. tried about one time.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can talk outside afterwards?
Absolutely, you have to talk as much as you'd like, but every living.
I'll slide and check. And, uh, I.
Um, with this, it's like in here, so it flats out.
Anybody with this flag. It's not a pond.
No, it's not a pond, so.
It's now a bit of a lake.
Yeah, so.
They want it to do what it's doing.
They want it to do what it's doing, and they've got dissipators, um.
Just hold that one.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any questions about the approval of this thing? And again, there's a lot of the contingent upon, could one takes place, BZA. And T-Doc, they're not going, so do we have any more questions for? Being none, what's questions for?
Make the motion, we accepted contingent upon.
BZA.
The BZA, and, and see what T-Doc says, too.
Okay, do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll see.
Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussion on that? Being none with a vote, all those in favor of approving this plat, let it be known by saying aye. And it is gonna be continued upon BZA and T-Doc approvals as well. Let me know with saying aye. All opposed? Thank you, sir, miss you, Will. See you in a couple weeks.
All right.
Will Robinson, Will Robinson. I've shown how.
Okay.
Austin's face.
Austin's not here. We got the G resolution, uh, twenty twenty-four eleven, amending the zone reservation to get the candidacy regarding a new C three zone, as presented by Austin. Austin is absent tonight, and I would anticipate a motion to postpone this, or to make a motion to postpone. Phone to the next meeting, I'd prefer Austin to be here for that discussion. You've got some information from the last couple months still that was in the last month's packet, uh, about, I think there was some stuff in this as well about that, so please take time to look at it over the next couple of weeks, and stuff, clear any discussions when we get back in here on the twenty-third, Stephanie, twenty-four, twenty-third. But, yes, ma'am, yeah.
Uh, so the last meeting that, uh, we were in, I gave you gra, uh, I gave you examples of three agricultural zone districts that other counties have used as a tool to, um, uh, be more customized in your agricultural zones. Um, I've read over those, I think it's a good idea, we could just, you have one agricultural zone district, what, eighty-five percent of your land is A one? And you're kinda short on tools to deal with development in those zone districts. Um, I think that, uh, Austin's effort to create the C three was to create, to carve out some land in your A one districts that could accommodate for commercial, but have it go through a process for being actual commercial. Well, that, that could be taken care of by the A, uh, A one, A two, A three, uh, zone districts. Now, we're talking about creating brand-new zone districts. It's a, you have a job to do so, and I have, uh, talked to some of your county commissioners.
Let me pause you after, um, especially, let me get a second, we got a motion.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that? Anybody second? Bob, Bob's second. Now, we're in the discussion, okay.
Um, I've talked to the county mayor about establishing, and we had a committee on short-term rental that met earlier today. And if we can establish a working group of members of the planning commission, maybe some county commission and interested residents, we could work through and actually draft some language that would ultimately have to come back to this body and then, uh, if recommended, go to your county commission. So, um, I was hoping that we could have a working group, Randy, you served on the one for short-term rental. Um, and I talked to, uh, one of your, uh, yes, and suggested that we continue that group or a different group, but we.
Regular committee that addresses stuff like this, too, I think it would be good. It can be disastrous and blown and all that stuff, but it is a good committee, uh, that would, should be willing to help deal with some of this.
And I, I think if the planning commission requests that, uh, and I know Austin came, you served on both boards, and so it's he's that matter, or anyone else that might have interest in attending. But when you start drafting new language for a zone district, it, it, it's not, it doesn't happen at nine o'clock at night, and it doesn't happen quickly. So if we set aside a town to meet every month, we could actually go through a whole lot of stuff and come up with some good product that we would have at that point sent through the process. So, um, I'm making that request.
You're making that request. Stephanie, could you reach out for us on that to see? Okay, and what, did you have a particular date in mind, Catherine, it worked, I know you're.
Uh, the way we've been doing it has been on the fourth Tuesday, which is, we met at one o'clock, twelve o'clock.
Yeah, most of the time it is, 'cause I'm usually here at one thirty or two thirty, whatever the thuggin' is after.
Yeah, if, uh. Whatever works, I have to be in mid-four at three o'clock. So I'm on my way.
We can give it the mayor on that, and see what he thinks is a good time for that, and then he can reach out to you, get your time fixed.
Okay, yeah.
Like, we've been doing.
Yeah, I think that worked very well, uh, I don't know what happened after. What y'all did with that?
I don't either.
I don't know how it went from four to ten pages, but, uh, if we could do that and have it just scheduled every month, I think we could actually lose some, through, uh, some. I don't know how it went from four to ten pages, but, uh, if we could do that and have it, uh, just scheduled every month, I think we could actually lose some, through, uh, through creating some tools. That would start getting.
I think it is.
We're a few hours out.
I'm on this board and I reluctantly agree with you.
Everybody understand where we're at right now? We're voting to postpone.
Oh.
Uh, G, until next month, Austin will be here, which is actually going to be in just a few days, a couple of weeks out, so. All those in favor of postponing out of G to the twenty-third, let me know when saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote, fastest. H, um. Everyone take a, a look at what they received in the package. From, uh, Mr. Critter. Had a chance to look over that. H is discussion to confirm that all plat survey reviews and approvals must be done by regional planning commission. And regional planning commission should decide in the future to authorize views, not only approvals, but a non-planning commission staff member, this can be done by following Tennessee State Code, uh, code presented by Bob Zanich. Bob, let you speak.
Yeah, I, I have the attorney's, uh, number handed to you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
And I know the very important, uh, page four. He stated.
I heard him, I'm sorry.
He stated that.
Hit that button, Bob. Hit that button on the mic, it's go green right there.
I'm sorry, I'll be here.
There you go.
I, I don't know how carefully the attorney's long-winded, um, uh, statement. But, but, but one important thing I noticed is in page four, he states that, that upon such confirmation approval by the P-R-RPC and the CLB. Catherine, what does CLB stand for? CLB?
That's your county legislative body.
Okay, so the county legislative body, okay. I, this is a legal term, I just didn't understand, CLB. Right.
Bob, let me, let me file who you're at, Bob. Okay, I got you. Out of number four, I vote.
Right, I, I've been before, this is accomplished, assuming that it is. In the meantime, the safe practice would be for the RPC and the planner to review and subdivision plats and approve same and have them executed by the RPC secretary. Essentially, I think what he's saying is, let us look at all these plats, um, review them, approve them, and submit it to zoning office for its, uh, execution. I think that's a safe thing to do, so that we don't have a repetition of the shed issues again. That we should make the decisions about these plats and then the zoning office can, you know, take care of it. What do you think, Catherine? I think our committee should make decisions about the two plat subdivisions.
And, and could you hear me if I might? I will address that. Because this is the best of me.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that is what we're going to do, I think, under other business tonight, we have, uh, how many, we have four or five? Five, we've got five to look at. And it is not because what had been done in the past was wrong.
No.
But it was because there had been question about what was being done. Okay, again, and, and that's what he said, just until the time that if there is a motion made to allow those folks to do that and approved by everybody, then we look at them for that period of time. He's not saying from now on, he's just saying until determination's made. If it's made to not do that, then we look at them now. If it's made to do that and let them sign, we will just look at them for that short time. And that's why we have those tonight, we stopped and Stephanie started collecting those. So I just wanted to make sure there was clarity on what that said and what we were doing, okay? So Catherine, I'll, I'll step back if you've got something you wanted to say.
No.
Oh, I thought you said.
That's, that's unbelievable, Catherine, unbelievable.
I have nothing to say. But, uh, if you're asking me about two-lot subdivisions.
Yes.
Um, um, it is standard practice for staff to approve two-lot subdivisions. Once again, it's determining compliance with the sub regs and, um, um, it's just like, I, I'll give you a list of stuff to correct. Um, I think that, and, and these are subdivisions that are over two lots, so it has to come to you. Um, state law allows, uh, Tennessee code allows planning commissions to designate, um, staff people. Uh, and it actually is more than two, originally it was two lots, the legislature actually increased it, uh, pretty significantly. Uh, so, um, I mean, right now I have five contracts, I approve all two-lot subdivisions. But, um, I think Stephanie reviews those here, um, I'm sure she does a fine job. Um, and as long as she's having the, uh, surveyors to correct them to comply with their subdivision regulations, uh, I think that's pretty standard operating procedure. Uh, now, who, who, uh, signs them is a different issue, you have a secretary of the planning commission. And I do not sign any plats.
So, so you don't think that two, two-plat subdivisions should come before our committee for approval or disapproval and let the staff do it?
Uh, I think that those are, there is, uh, we talked about volume here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, um, as I said, it is standard operating.
I, I know it's standard operating procedure, but, but given the experience we've had, Catherine, regarding the sheds and what happened with the sheds, that should be sort of a, a good example of why we should review all, all sub, you know, two, two-plat subdivisions, so we don't have a review of the same.
May I, may I interject?
Of course.
And I want to be clear in this. If the two-lot subdivision with the sheds, as it was presented to Stephanie, had come before this, we would have not had any right to turn it down.
But we did turn it down.
No, we didn't turn down a two-lot subdivision. That is not what got turned down, Bob.
That.
I voted for what got turned down.
Austin's motion was.
It was not a two-lot subdivision.
What was it?
Stephanie, we'd have to go back and get the minutes, but that was about four months ago. It's three-lot subdivision. So we, we turned that down. We approved, she approved two-lot, which is had the right to do. And if it had come before us, there was nothing in what was presented to keep us from approving that. I know it don't taste good.
It doesn't taste good. I, I do not want a repetition of the, the church camp that was created under the auspices of a two subdivision. I don't know, it was two or three, I don't care.
There's ways for you and your subdivision and the subdivision regs that you all have, I suppose, I've not seen your subdivision regs, to take recourse on that.
It comes with these restrictions.
These restrictions, yes, those things, it's, it's, it's out of our, out of our hands. If they're, and Randy, go ahead. And well, on that thought, Tom, I, I said, give you the floor just a second, going out, sit in front of the.
I think what we ran into was they misled, but what they asked for was approved, as it had been approved through Tim Seals being in there and anybody else had been in there. But we can't, I mean, if you tell us you're building this and you're using it for something else, there's no, I mean, we cannot hold them moral, we can't make them pass a moral test or an integrity test on whether they're lying to us or not. And I hate this situation for your community. But I, I think it was done the same way it's been done. How long's Tim been in there? I know it's been done.
I think so. Eighty-nine, I want to say.
This is the first time we've had an issue, but it wasn't because of what they've done per se, it is what they were told was going to be done with the property. And I think that's our real issue, we're, we're trying to regulate all this, but we're not looking at the real issue. Tim would have signed off on it if it come to him as a two-lot subdivision. And he had years of experience and I'm not sure how many, how long you been in that office. But if, if you come in there and say, hey, I'm going to use this for just a household, and then you turn it into a.
Church camp.
Church camp. That's nothing that we can do anything about. And, and I think that's where, I'm not saying I disagree with you, because I understand having that next door to you in your community.
No, I'm just concerned about the whole community. I don't want other people to do the same thing. You know, there could be other future church camps.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, Catherine, let me let Tom. We've walked on in class, sorry.
Uh, that's fine. I just want to say that, you know, if I had my rather son, I'd say let's change this from two lot up to three, or four. The state has already saw the need for that, the lay and time of people trying, as far as progress goes, as far as people subdividing property, trying to get the property closed out and everything else. That's why the state went from, what, four to six?
No, they went from two to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
I don't know, the only staff person that is willing to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can't.
But, but I'm just saying that's, you know, the two lot's fine. And I told you once for him, the reason that the two lot was set up that way and didn't go for a planning commission. And, you know, he's talking about three or four, and like I say, if I had my choice, I'd go at least three or four to help people out. That's in developing this, selling property, subdividing property. But kind of, first out, I have to prove their sale, unless they're on sue. If they're on sue, you know, that's a different issue, you the commercial. But anyway, I have to prove for it ever goes over to Tim's office in the zone, okay? So when I approve the two lot, three lot, or whatever, I'm helping a guy out. The guy that's got two kids and he wants to subdivide a piece of property. Or I, I relive this chick, he's got a piece of property he wants to sell. Guy comes up and says, you want to sell that property? Goes now. And he says, I'll give you fifty thousand, you want twenty, but I want to close it out in thirty days. Okay. I can get that done, most anybody can get that done in thirty days. But if they've got to go for a planning commission, it could be two months. They lose the sale, their property and everything else. Now, as a property owner, I just thought this out at you. Would you want to sit here for two months and lose a sale on a piece of property on a, just because you're wanting to subdivide one piece of property off your property? And as far as the sheds go, it had nothing to do with her signing anything or me signing anything and it been a, went from a three lot to a two lot. Every bit of it, you can call any attorney, all of it was done legally. But we have no regulation, just like he said, what somebody does to that property. I have some people come in every day and get a permit for a house. Every day. You know what I go out and find? A camper. I find a barn, I find this. So, you know, should I say, okay, everybody's going to put in a separate, needs to come zoning, and somebody promised that that's what they're going to build? You never get anything done, so, you know, the two lots needs to stay just like it is, it's in-house, so somebody gets them done. That guy right here, that can't, was waiting, he's been waiting five days to get just the plat signed because he moved the property line. And he's selling. So we're, we're holding up the closing now for over a week. That could have been done in fifteen minutes if we hadn't bring it to this planning commission.
Ted, I'm trying to make sure that we don't have future church camps created in two or two, I don't care about two or three sub. I, what, what was wrong, what was, they did wrong.
Order. We rehash this for four or five months.
We have.
Catherine, would you please explain again, him again, what legal recourse they would have on saying it was, uh, it's church camps? It's out of our hands.
I, I think one thing that's being confused, um, you, the planning commission has the responsibility to administer two different sets of regulations. One is the subdivision regulations, that's the creation, elimination, or any change to a legal law of record. You're moving a property line, you're creating a property line, you're deleting a property line. Those are subdivision regulations. By state law, it is a best practices, there is no discretion in it. So if you comply with the subdivision regulations that this county has adopted, everybody's right. You have to approve that subdivision, you have no choice. It is a use by right, uh, it is not considered as privilege. Uh, your zoning ordinance is privileged, and I will disagree with Tom on this one, is you have zone districts, uh, that regulate land uses. Uh, a house is a land use, uh, a business is a land use. Um, and it is considered discretionary because the legislative body approves zone districts that governs use of property. Uh, in this instance, um, there was a misrepresentation regarding sheds versus what, what they actually built.
Wha, wha, what do you think? Okay, go ahead, Catherine.
So you can't confuse these two.
No, I'm, I'm not.
One of them deals with property lines and they brought us a two-lot subdivision. The two-lot subdivisions have always been approved by the staff and they approved this one, it was recorded. Um, as far as land use, I think that the county is looking at better enforcement to policy land uses that aren't complying with the issue of the building permits and aren't complying with zone districts. Uh, which I really think you need to do, I think the county needs to do a better job there.
I agree.
You have people here who are disgruntled about what's going on.
I agree with that, Catherine.
And zoning is a protection of your discretionary rights for land use. And I've talked to the mayor about this, I've, I've talked to different members of the staff. And that's obviously something that is, there's greater emphasis on, there's interest in, I think you'll see improvements in that in the future. But those are two separate issues. As far as changing the, uh, policy of allowing staff to approve two-lot subdivisions, I think that's efficient, I think it's correct. I think that, uh, Stephanie is now referring them to the secretary for her signature as opposed to signing them. And I think also it needs to be stressed that if a plat comes to Stephanie that makes her uncomfortable for whatever reason, she has the right to refer it to the planning commission.
And there was some confusion denied on a, what was thought to be a three-lotter, which was actually a two-lotter. And we went through a third, because she didn't fill coffee.
Right.
And, and if, if a plat is determined not to meet the sub reg, she is compelled to refer it to this body for denial. She can only approve if she is determined that a two-lot subdivision is compliant with the sub reg. If it's not, you need to always refer those here for, for denial.
That makes sense, Catherine, thank you for that. Let me, let me kind of make one more point regarding the sheds, and my smarter wife just gave me this thing, so I'll, I'll read it to you. The zoning office enforcement, it says, she says, A-one property currently has several uses that are not permitted on agricultural land. For instance, church camps are not allowed to operate on A-one property, is that correct? They're not, church camps are not. The zoning office presently acts as the enforcer of this rule, she does. I would submit that they need to be, to cite Grace Contractors as violating the uses of A-one land. Would that, would that be, would that be unreasonable?
If I was speaking out of turn, let me know. My understanding, you would have to have legal proof. Legal proof. So what would the course of action be, Catherine?
Um, typically, there is a procedure in place for planning departments or codes.
And we don't have a, we don't have.
And you don't have, and.
We don't have that.
You don't have that, my understanding is that is something that is being looked at as far as staff. Uh, I think it, it's kind of a perfect storm in that you have insufficient staff to consider all the development that's going on here. I think it's one of the things with regard to short-term rental, that is a revenue generator that would pay to offset the, uh, the cost of having a code enforcement officer and because that individual has to have a vehicle, that's not a cheap endeavor. Um, I would, uh, I would argue to approve something that establishes revenue stream, uh, to, it creates acquisition. Um, minus that, you really lack procedural policy. Um, minus that, you really like procedural policies- to enforce your zoning ordinance. Um, so I think it will improve, but I think it is an issue, it needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
But we can't just create that out of thin air and that and how to handle it.
It has to be adopted, it has to be vetted.
Well, we'll have to just work on it, that's all.
And you need a person to do it, you need a born body.
Yeah, it's, go ahead Tom. If it, if they're not looking, what they said, can we retract? Well, they, they built what they said, it's how they're using it. They've got a two lot subdivision, two different structures. It's the use of it. That can wait, could we retract? That's not for us to do.
Plat, you cannot vacate that plat.
That's, that's not in our wheelhouse. I would, and if I'm, yeah, speaking out of turn out of line, I would thank the county sheriff, some of us, about what's going on. State fire marshal, I mean, that's, how, where do you go?
Well, I, and I've brought this up before, uh, it's considered, um, group assembly. Uh, as group assembly, the state testing has party registered.
They do.
And I don't know if that's, the issue has ever been regarded as that?
Let me, let me ask this question again on that, pardon if you're interrupting, but you can get permits, for certain times out of year. And you live in farm owners that do potter root. It's group assembly on a middle of a hundred acre acres, track the ground. It's, it's concert and they get permits for those things.
But, but it is, that is a temporary issue.
Right.
Um-
It'll be for each instance.
The, the state fire marshal has heavy, heavy building fire codes-
On the buildings?
On group assemblies.
Absolutely.
And if they, if those buildings don't meet, meet those criteria, and I'm certain that the state fire marshal has never been identified or requested-
It's, it's shut down right now Catherine, it's shut down. It's not functional, they shut it down. The fire marshal came and shut it down. It's, it's no longer functional right now.
There you go. Um, that, oh, they take a heavy hand on it. I mean, it's, it's, uh, you're, at that point, you are risking individuals' lives.
Exactly.
And there's, um, you know, there, that's, there, we're talking with fracular systems. We're talking rate of firewall, we're talking, uh, uh, fire flow, uh, for, uh, for fire protection, suppression.
Let, let me square it down just a minute, and Catherine, please, give me clear interruption.
No, you're good.
I, I, I don't want Bob U or anyone else here to think that we're for what's going on.
I appreciate that.
I don't like being lied to.
I don't either.
Don't fake any of us though. And, but if those guidelines to do what they requested to do were done, we had to approve the two lot.
Right.
We didn't have any standing not to. Now, how they've used it since then, they're out of line, they're shut out. You know, so the, the, I guess the end does by the means in that.
I have no problem with that.
What part of, that our attorneys have in? And it said, at the fourth page here? Oh, he write in the letter? No, no, they didn't write in the letter. And it's not for him to import aside.
And, but you're talking about the land use, not the plat, right?
Right, yeah. The two secretary, you know, that's, everything was yet on the plat. But how they've used their plat, of course, not that much yet.
But they made all the specifications, except for the fire marshal. Can they then start using it as a church camp again?
Should not be, no, because it's not, maybe they're both-
Oh, you don't think they-
I don't think they could do it, no. You don't, I mean, we're talking about major-
Different material, but there's, and I always weigh to get around anything. It's like we talked about, you know, the number one thing that's been, be done in this county body is a code supporter.
I agree, I have no problem with that. We're all agreeing.
You need a code supporter. And they gotta go and offer ten, hire one in here and zone it right now, since Tim's gone. Step to run out, they hire somebody to be in there. That's my opinion, my voice gets several commissioners in the paper. Because you need a phone, uh, code supporter.
Absolutely.
Uh, but you can get it around anytime. It don't matter what you say this, you gonna disagree what I say, but just like on this Airbnb that's there for, all the revenue, everybody says you're gonna get it. They're not gonna get it, you know why? All I gotta do is say I wanna live there a few weeks a year. You're not gonna get a dime out of it. There's no longer, you know, so there's rules getting around what you're wanting to do and everything else. But what I wanna stress, and I, and this last, I don't wanna say anything about it, is that there was nothing ever done wrong in the approval of that, that property of that. And I, just like I say, I go, people say this, and they do just opposite. They said these building sheds, until they had bathrooms in there, till they had anything in that building, it was classified under the building department. I don't care if it's ten thousand square foot on the roof, it's a shed. So, they did not really violate what they said they were gonna do. The only time they violated it was when they said they want to make a church camp in. That's the only time. The buildings over there were not violations because they were classified as sheds. It don't matter how they got-
Ted, when you went to that building initially, there were little crosses on every single window in that so-called shed. Their, their intention was to build a church camp the day one.
Well, I don't get in, I-
Okay, that's okay.
Sixty beds, nothing in there, and also, I, you know, I don't hear none of that.
I guess you didn't catch that.
But I'm just saying, there was nothing ever done wrong. And there's no reason to change the format of this body, the zoning commission, the zoning and planning over that one instant because nothing was done wrong by this department, Stephanie's department.
I've asked for Tom, as far as him being a, a stricker for the rules, I've seen seventy lines in. And them have to be moved. You know, so he, he holds, I can say wherever, I've seen it done, he's, he's had a movement. So, he, he does stick by what's supposed to be done. And, and he's sharing, I think, from heart and from years of service on how this stuff was handled.
The zoning department right now has got lawsuits been going on for, what, going on three years? It's not been resolved, but, you know, the zoning department brought the attorney's attention and had them sue, you know, and it went on three years and nothing been resolved yet. So, you know, they've been doing their due diligence, one, just like me, when I find something wrong, I can contact attorney, if you can too, to get something done. But, you know, it's a legal process, it takes a while to get it done.
Good, good discussion, and Randy, I'm gonna give you the foreword. I just wanna say, I appreciate the passion, and it shows how much you care. So, thank you for that. I don't, if you think I was trying to curtail, I just, we get out of hand.
I would like to make a motion to let that office, and I'm not sure if we need to name a person or a position, because we're in this discussion right now because we named a person last time.
They should always be a position.
Position, uh, and what that position is or who is going in that position. But I would like to make a motion that we allow them to do the two lot subdivisions in office there. And I would look for a second, but I guess I need to know what the position is that we want them, and they want to do that.
Stephanie, what is your, and you, you, you talk about the position Stephanie's in.
Yeah.
Your proper title?
Zoning and plot officer.
Zoning and plot officer. And that was the same position Tim filled whenever he was, it was just his name, Tim. Okay, now Catherine? I'm not, and Randy, I'm not trying to, what you said. You said even though they can review those, the secretary, and I'm not trying to volunteer myself for anything, but you said in other counties, the secretary or the chairman sign off on it, is that correct?
Uh, that's typical now, and I think your, I read your attorney's opinion.
Right.
And I know he did confer with the attorney from C T A S. And if there is a designated, of, um, if, if the planning commission has appointed a designated, uh, it could be another member of the planning commission, or it could be a member of the staff.
Okay.
So, according to-
Maps, that may have-
If, uh, if I think that, uh, she is designated to so, or her position is. Now, the original resolution, I think, um, allocating that responsibility to Miss Fields was never found, correct? So, it's been, it's been-
Yes, yeah, no, it was found, it was found.
It was found? Uh, and did they designate, did they designate?
Tim Seales, it was not the position, it was Tim Seales.
So, he owns those, he owns the park.
And his name, Tim, instead of that position.
Yeah, and, and if you're gonna do it, it should be the position.
He's only in, her position, that position that looks at those and would see that those are in compliance, that would be tasked with that, would be the zoning compliance officer. Yeah, but I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just, I'm giving clarity.
I wanna make it before they can do it in the office and then they have us as a backup. But if you have anything that's any question, we rob just like the one we had tonight. I think that's- And then, for some reason, that position is out, whoever's in that position is out, then they can, you'd be able to sign it or whoever would be there. Kind of simplified, go ahead, this one.
I will tell you this, I would not sign a plat. Uh, this is the county government, you have court liability. If anything ever comes back as far as anything improper or something that somebody wants to challenge, her name is gonna be on that document. And, uh, I personally would not want that responsibility.
What would you recommend then? Do you think it should come to us?
The secretary.
But the secretary represents us, the secretary represents our views.
So, I think she should be able to, uh, uh, receive them, review them, approve them. If disapproved, we'll bring them back to this body for a recommendation of denial. And after she approves them, Miss Sue comes in and signs.
I'll second that. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding Brian, but that's an excellent suggestion.
What I said was hold it up there, but you're fixing to lay everybody a month or two months?
Well, no, right now, by understanding, Stephanie can look at them and say they're all good. She can call Sue and Sue can swing by the office and-
Besides, still delaying a week or two. If she's out of vacation, she's sick. You got a month and two of whatever you gotta wait. He's gonna hold there. Well, it's set up, I'm just, you know, it's my opinion because it affects my office.
Absolutely.
It affects my office big time. And another thing, if you wanna vote before this board, you'll be here ten left.
No, we won't. We, we're here, Ted, 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 we're-
Hey, 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 hey. We got a motion, we're just trying to get clarity on the motion. So, if the secretary is not there, that person can be filled in by someone else, correct?
Mm-hmm. You can designate another member of the planning commission?
Do we have to do it with his motion, or can that be the, the, how he's have it?
No, it should be in your, in declaration for-
So, it, so typically, typically, who would that be?
Could be another member of his body.
Individual? And if, if something happens, if, if that person dies, if we become, and that could happen. If the person that's doing either position dies, then that's immediate attention at the next meeting to get them fixed. That's a new fee.
I've had a, a secretary of planning commission fall ill. And they actually did a temporary-
Yeah.
And appointed a temporary se- secretary. And then individual did pass away, so then they made it permanent.
Anything that's done here has to go back before, uh, county commission, correct?
Yeah.
So, we're done, I think you're done. I was reading in, in this type, go ahead Randy.
So, my motion is Stephanie's position can sign off on, if there's, if something happens to her, she is not available. It's the only reason I was saying bring you in. That way you don't have to sign off on everyone of them. Did you catch that? Stephanie's position, they have to sign off on two plats, on, or two subdivisions, two lot subdivisions. And then, if for some reason she's in a hospital or some, God forbid, something happened, then it would come to her to sign. And that's what, that's as a backup. And either one of them can bring it to us as a whole, if there's any issues on it like the one you had tonight. That would be my motion.
Okay, we have a proper motion, then we have a second.
Could, we don't, you don't wanna discuss it?
After a second, you have to.
Okay.
You don't discuss.
Oh, I'll second it, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, now we're open for discussion.
You know, I've had secretaries all my life, but the secretary represents us. She does not have any particular powers or responsibilities. She is representing us. We, us should make the approval first, then the secretary signs it. Not the secretary, she has no special-
Bob, I think that's going exactly around what we're trying to get out of holding people up a month due.
My thing is if she sees any issue with it, or she don't-
She, she could bring it to us.
Just like if Catherine was our secretary, she says she's not gonna sign it.
Yeah.
And I understand that. Then they would bring it to us.
Yeah. And I think that they would do the other, so deny, in, in the one we looked at. If there was a pause or a question, things didn't look right.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not gonna sign off on it. Hey, and Randy, I didn't mean to step over on that, just, just trying to give clarity to it. Was I along in what you was saying? And that's-
Because I don't wanna put the responsibility on her when she's not in the office every night, no offense.
There you go.
No offense to you.
No, I understand.
So, you have some issues, you bring it before us, right, Sue?
If it's not cut and dry, point blank.
Well, yeah, if I had issues with it, I'd bring it before you guys, yeah.
I want everybody to be very clear.
But so would Stephanie, she has authority to decide those.
I want everybody to be very clear about what we're voting on. Mr. Bells, if I can get you to state your motion again, we have a second. I just want everybody to know what we're voting on at this point in time.
I make a motion that Brian buys pizza tonight.
Yeah, I follow it, pizza plus.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of tension here, and I understand, and I understand your frustration, and I appreciate the second. My motion is for it to go to Stephanie's office and her position, not Stephanie in general, but that position, be allowed to sign two lot subdivisions. And in the event that, God forbid, she has a car wreck on the way into work and they need to get something signed, she's not able to be back at work in a timely manner, then it would come to you to sign. And if you feel, or the secretary of this committee to sign. And if that person doesn't feel that it's cut and dry and to the T like it's supposed to be, it comes before the whole committee. And that's, that's my motion, is for Stephanie's office to take care of the two lot subdivisions. Then it comes to the secretary of our committee, if, uh, she's not available, to take care of. And then you can reach out to all of us or whatever, and we can look at it, if we need to have them, especially probably go on there.
And for, for the minutes, we want to, to make that, because if somebody's looking at this twenty-five here down the road and we all going to glory, they can see this. Zoning and compliance officer, this answer's gonna be in a minute, support for approval. Is that-
And then comes the secretary.
And then comes the secretary. Okay. Everybody understand?
Has a backup plan.
Has backup plan if Stephanie's on that.
She has full approval.
Any further discussion?
Still get second on that?
I, I seconded it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, both passes. Say, follow me, I bet, I think I'm more happy to, what my agenda go, it's something a little bit difficult. Uh, do we have any other business? And I guess people can come up on the back.
Let's go home.
Being none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Say, all in fa- all those in favor, you can let it be known by standing.